Mr. Cameron?
President.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Pelley is at the table.
Here.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberal public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody. First item is to read the approval of minutes of the last meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Is there a second? All right, we'll call votes please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Feagel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Slatter?
Aye.
All right, this is section meeting for visitors communications and the first on the list today is Scott Sedmack and John Mitchell from St. Elizabeth Healthcare. So if you all would like to step forward and turn the projector on in my face, that would be great.
That's what I understand.
Yeah, so I might shift a little bit.
He's telling me it takes a second to warm up, right? Well, my name is John Mitchell. I'm the Senior Vice President and Chief Operating Officer for St. Elizabeth Fort Thomas Location. I'm also at our Covington location. I'm new to Fort Thomas. I've only been in this role about nine to 10 months, but I'm not new to St. Elizabeth. I've been with St. E for 15 years now, so, and I appreciate you giving us a few minutes on the agenda. I am here tonight to talk to you a little bit about our past year in review and talk to you about some exciting things that are going on at St. Elizabeth, just so the council is in the know. So, we are a major player in Northern Kentucky from a healthcare standpoint, and in 2017 we had 4,500 births in Northern Kentucky, more than 34,000 different surgeries. We had 1.4 million outpatient visits, over 55,000 inpatient admissions, and overall about 3 million patient encounters across our organization. So, St. E is the largest employer in Northern Kentucky with 8,500 associates. More than 80 percent of our associates live, and physicians, live in Northern Kentucky. St. Elizabeth employs more than 1,300 residents of Campbell County and employs more than 1,000 employees at, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, 1,300 residents of Campbell County and employs about 1,000 employees in Campbell County, and 227 of our employees are residents of the city of Fort Thomas. Total economic impact of more than $2 billion, St. E has contributed roughly $80 million in combined local and state taxes, including sales tax, city tax, and payroll tax, and that means we are about 10 percent of the economy of Northern Kentucky. Community benefit is a big part of St. Elizabeth. We are a nonprofit and we have a mission, a vision, and so about $100 million in community benefit in 2017, and that was made up of Medicare losses, unpaid costs, including Medicaid and Indigent Care, free and discounted health services, and uncompensated care. And we are also striving to be the best community partner, and we're doing things in the area of health and wellness, our response to the opioid epidemic. We partner with healthcare institutions like the YMCA and Griffin Sports. We're working in the education arena. We are partnering with the University, Northern Kentucky University, to build their Health Innovation Center. We're also working with NKU and UK to bring a medical school to Northern Kentucky. And we're also working the area of workforce development, working with startup companies through Uptech and Centrefuse, and supporting the Navigo program, which partners high school students with employers. So, one of the visions of St. Elizabeth is to make Northern Kentucky one of the healthiest communities in America. It's a very lofty goal, and currently our measure of that is citizens that self-report a health status of either excellent or very good. Right now, 49 percent of the citizens of Northern Kentucky report excellent or very good. We want to get them to 55 percent. And one of the biggest, some of the biggest challenges that we have to face are smoking, smoking cessation, we have a big problem with cancer in this region, substance abuse disorder, which we'll talk about a little bit, and diabetes. We also are partnering with other community organizations, for example, Go Pantry. St. Elizabeth associates provided 1,112 boxes of full meals for students so they would not go hungry over the summer months. We announced a partnership with the Northern Kentucky Build Coalition, and that is to reduce tobacco use in Covington and Gallatin County. And we also are a big participant with the American Heart Association in both their Heart Race and Heart Chase, and more than 700 St. Elizabeth associates and their family members and friends have helped to build three Habitat for Humanity homes, two in Northern Kentucky and one in Indiana. We also provide sports medicine and athletic training services to 22 high schools, three club sports programs, and to two universities, and we do so at no cost to the schools, and that is the equivalent of 40 FTEs and the team physicians that we provide, and that translates to about $2.5 million in community benefit. Just talking about some of the awards that St. Elizabeth has received recently, our radiology division received the Diagnostic Imaging Center of Excellence Award. Our hospice received honors elite status for patient satisfaction scores. The Fort Thomas Hospital received the American Heart Association, the American Stroke Association's Get With the Guidelines arterial fib gold award. Fort Thomas was also recognized by the AHA for heart failure on a roll. We are the second highest enrolling institution behind MD Anderson on the Alternative Approach Study for Breast Cancer. Fort Thomas Hospital was recognized by Health Grades with the 2018 Patient Safety Excellence Award, given to only the top 10 percent of hospitals in the country. And our biggest achievement, the one I'm most proud of, Fort Thomas recently became a magnet designated hospital. It's something that we've been working on for the past eight to 10 years. Edgewood, Covington, and Grant have been magnet for 12 years, and we have been trying to get Florence and Fort Thomas to achieve magnet status since the merger, and we just achieved that in, earlier this year in the spring. St. Elizabeth physicians is a big component of our organization, and they are the highest rated physicians in the region, 4.7 on a five-point scale, and they lead the region for the MyChart usage and other innovative access tools such as online scheduling and Innovation, St. Elizabeth and our Orthopedics Department performed the first total knee replacement surgery using a Mako robotic assisted surgery robot. We were the first in the world to offer a revolutionary new shoulder replacement surgery. It's a rotator cuff sparing method. We were the first in the region to offer the upgraded Mazur X technology for spinal fusion. Fort Thomas also is, has a state-of-the-art long-term IV therapy unit, and we were the first in the country to implement Epic, our electronic medical record vendor, Epic security system. So, talking about building for the future, growth is happening. We, as I mentioned, we've announced our affiliation with the University of Kentucky in Northern Kentucky to develop a UK regional medical school campus right here in Northern Kentucky. We're ramping up our precision medicine capabilities, that's genetic testing, to actually target medical care for cardiac as well as cancer. We finished our master facility plan, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that in a few minutes. We have a comprehensive oncology strategic plan, including a new cancer facility, which I'll mention in just a moment, and we've invested a significant amount of marketing dollars in developing a customer relationship management system. So, Comprehensive Cancer Center, we announced our major commitment to building a $120 million cancer center on our Edgewood campus. We launched our 10th St. Elizabeth Foundation Vision Campaign to raise funds for the building of this facility. $1.5 million was pledged by our associates and providers with over 70 percent participation, and the foundation will now be beginning their external campaign to raise funds for this new facility. Other projects that'll expand access, we have partnerships with Sun Behavioral Health and Erlanger. We have a regional lab in partnership with TriHealth, and we've developed a new sports medicine location at the Griffin Elite and partnership with Orthocinci. At Edgewood, we've installed a new linear accelerator. We've expanded the Cincinnati Eye Institute facility. We've added a thoracic OR, PICU. Grant County, we've expanded their ED and did some renovation to the main entrance. SEP, we've opened a multi-specialty building in Dearborn, Indiana, and we've opened a Journey to Recovery for drug and alcohol addiction right there in Crestview Hills. Florence, we've renovated and moved our physical therapy, and in Owen County, we are providing outpatient services and after-hours care. So, another area of growth is our business health, where we're developing relationships with businesses. We have over 20 new company contracts in 2017. We're currently operating five onsite clinics. We have contracts with DHL and Amazon, and we've added onsite primary care at New Core Steel down in Gallatin County, and we are currently working with the Northern Kentucky Chamber to market a healthcare plan called the Elite Healthcare Plan that'll be sold to Northern Kentucky businesses. When it comes to fighting heroin, in 2017, we had over 3,200 visits to our EDs that were opioid-related. That's about 1.6 percent of our total ED volume, and St. E has invested over $3.3 million in addiction-related services, including dedicated resources, partnering with the next Heroin Impact Community Plan for Northern Kentucky. We doubled our addiction treatment capacity. We've advocated for syringe access, and I'll mention a little bit about that in just a moment. We partnered with the Inquirer to raise awareness, and actually because of our partnership, the Inquirer won a Pulitzer Prize Award with their reporting, and we provided opioid 101 training for nurses. So, syringe access is something that's going to be operated by the Northern Kentucky Health Department in the next week in both our Covington and Newport locations. So, the Newport location is at our St. E Physician Urgent Care Parking Lot at 1400 North Grand. The open house is tomorrow from, I think, 1:00 to 3:00, and regular hours will be Tuesdays from 1:00 to 4:00, starting July 24th. We also will have an operation in Covington on Thursdays from 1:00 to 4:00, starting that same week. So, talking a little bit about Fort Thomas and the impact that we have in Campbell County, we've invested a significant amount of money in the facility over the last few years. We purchased the Mildred Dean site. We built our medical office building on that campus. We've invested extensively in IT equipment and our Epic implementation. We've expanded and remodeled our oncology clinic at the Fort Thomas location. We've expanded and updated our women's wellness suite. We've added a new endoscopy suite, and we've upgraded our ICU. We've also improved our outpatient radiology suite right next to our ER. We've updated the main street or our main entrance area. We've added the DaVinci robot, and we actually just purchased the newest, latest, and greatest model of DaVinci. It's called the Xi robot, and we'll be rolling that out in August. We did remodel our emergency department, and we did some upgrades to our ORs, and that was over $34 million already, and we've got another $15 million to spend over the next two years. So, our overall strategy for Campbell County is, you know, we're here to serve as community hospital. Our focus is for short stays and surgical volume. The services that we offer currently are cancer care, robotic and general surgery, emergency services, skilled nursing, wound care, urology, uro-gyn services, women's services, and for inpatient, short stay, podiatry, urogen, and urology, and for outpatient services, cancer, heart and vascular, ortho, and women's. And as I mentioned, we were approved in our master facility plan, and Fort Thomas was allocated about $15 million. And what we're going to do with that money is, we are actually, which is not on the slide, we're installing a new linear accelerator in our cancer care unit. We are spending about $10 million completely gutting and renovating our ORs. Our ORs haven't been touched in over 20 years, so we're bringing those up to state-of-the-art capacity. We are looking for, we're not looking for land, we have land in front of NKU on US-27 where we're going to be building a multi-specialty clinic and urgent care right there in Highland Heights, and we are also going to be expanding the MOB right here in Newport at the 1400 Grand location. So, that is the end of my slides, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have for me, and I also want to give a shout-out to Scott Sedmack who's with me. He's our Director of Community Relations, and he helped me put together this slide, and he can help me answer questions as well.
Excellent. That's very interesting. I didn't realize how many things you're all involved with here in Fort Thomas and in Northern Kentucky in general. Very interesting, very good stuff. Do they have any questions or comments?
John, I had said a quick question, and the city can do to help support St. E in your mission?
Yeah, I think, you know, being there for us when we need you from a legislative standpoint, or any kind of hurdles that we might hit from either county or state, we could count on your support. I can't think of anything off the top of my head that's preventing us from moving forward, but if we're there, part of why we come out and we talk is we want people to be aware of all the good things that St. E is doing, and the major impact that we do have on the community, and we do want to be a good community partner, so we appreciate the time.
I like the wellness focus and also the vans and things you have out to do, the screenings, to make it easy for people to find out, you know.
Right.
Is there a problem, or am I good? You know, Fort Thomas is such an active community, people are walking all the time in our visioning process that we've, in the process of doing this, you know, we've got, we've got trails through the parks, we've got, folks are really interested in being able to, this is a very walkable town.
Right, right, and I'm serious when I say that one of our goals is to make Northern Kentucky one of the healthiest communities, and we are more than happy to partner with communities on things like walking trails, bike trails, playgrounds, anything that promotes a healthy lifestyle.
That's great, that's great.
John Scott, I appreciate you reaching out to the community like this. This isn't something I don't think that St. Elizabeth has done historically, and I don't think a lot of folks in the community are aware of, you know, how top-notch the services are that St. Elizabeth provides. You know, Fort Thomas is rated as one of the top places to live in the country by some survey, and one of the key factors is access to healthcare. And so, you know, you're, St. E is a critical corporate citizen, and I think it's also great that there's a big audience tonight there. Ashley, don't want to disappoint you, you probably didn't come to hear you. Nevertheless, you know, health is an individual and community responsibility too, so the fact that people are aware of this and the fact that St. Elizabeth is promoting healthy lifestyles as a matter, as a means of having a healthy, healthier community, asking communities to participate in this health endeavor, I think, is important, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. All right. Okay, we are still in the visitors and communications sections, and I realize a lot of you are probably here about the zoning text amendment before we get, and I will move that up on the agenda so you all, so we can get to that sooner, but prior to that, is there anybody here that wants to address counsel on something other than the text amendment issue?
Good evening, Mayor Hauss and council. I would like to address the council about that, but there are several other things I wanted to bring to your attention. I am Mary Healy.
Thank you.
And I live at 110 Hollywood's Drive.
Okay.
You may recall that I was here in May and expressed concern that the South End was, did not seem to be at the forefront of city council's agenda. I want to mention two other things as an example, and what I learned actually after the meeting. On the way out, I was talking to Roger Peterman, and I had mentioned during the meeting about the benches, that there are beautiful benches and that we don't have any in the South End. Roger mentioned to me he thought that I could buy one for $500. I learned after that, that because city council hasn't extended the discount for certain areas of town, if I went to buy a bench in memory of my parents who lived on Hollywood Drive, I have to pay $1,000 instead of $500, and I think that's entirely unfair when we seem to have more benches than what we need in the city business district and now the midway, and I have to pay $500 more. That's one example. I also, living on the South End, I don't take Memorial Parkway very often to town, but I did because I do support the banks here, and had to stop at a bank on the way home last Friday. I noticed that the gateway Fort Thomas signs were very nicely landscaped across from Sarburg Dust Point where you happen to live. I invite city council to take a drive in the south corridor. We do not have landscaping on our gateway sign. We have weeds growing under it right now. So, those are just two examples where I assume that it is a lack of attention and not that we are being discriminated against, but they are very visible signs that the South End needs to receive more attention and fairness from this council. And I don't know if you have any questions, but I wanted to bring those things to your attention.
Okay, thank you very much.
Should I update counsel on both of those items? And forgive me, I'm not certain, the confusion, the sponsoring of benches is the same throughout the city, and that rate has never changed, so.
I was told by Melissa when I called her about it, that there is a $500 price for in the central business district and the midway, and that I would have to pay $1,000. Did you not tell me that, Melissa?
A streetscape bench is cheaper because it's part of a project, if it's not already designated, but they're all designated, because they're about $525 now. If we extend that streetscape out, then I would assume.
If they're streetscape, if any part of the streetscape, but our park benches are $1,000, right?
Well, is a bench at the top of Hollywood's Drive where there are two different bus routes that go through Fort Thomas?
If it's a streetscape, then it would be the same, so we can address that issue.
Okay.
And on the other issue on the signs, the signs were sponsored by Renaissance, and they will all be landscaped. The only one that's landscaped to date is the, and we had a volunteer do the design, but every one of them will be landscaped, so.
Well, it's just a matter of timing too. I'm just pointing this out that the south side is a part of Fort Thomas, and I heard it's one of the top places to live, as mentioned by Mr. Peterman tonight. I don't think that people only saw the south side, that we may get that ranking, and I think that needs to change.
Fair enough, and again, I'm just saying that all the signs will be landscaped.
All right, my name is, I'd like to address counsel on something other than the text amendment.
Sure.
Are we supposed to address the St. E folks?
Sure.
Sorry guys.
I didn't know I was going to do this. I'm a little nervous.
Say your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Brian Schultz, I live on Summit, 81 Summit. Thank you for letting me talk. I'll make this brief. Everything that the guys from St. E said is, I've worked at hospitals for a long, long time, I actually used to work in there a long time ago. It's great for our community. It's great to have a hospital in our community. I think it's fantastic. I'm an ER nurse, so it's fantastic to have this syringe exchange thing is something that we need. I don't work at St. E, I don't work right here on the hill, but I live here, and I'm with fire and police, these guys can probably appreciate what I see two days ago, every day that I'm there, I worked two days ago, I pulled two people that were not alive, we pulled them out of the car, and we made them alive again, and it's over and over and over. This is a terrible epidemic that's going on. Probably my only question is, the needle exchange will probably be some kind of vans and kind of, some kind of apparatus that, the decision as to why it's being put right there by the hospital, is just because where is, is it a need for, is that where the most amount of people are that these people, where the overdoses are? It feels like, you know, it should be taken to where the amount of overdoses are taking place. You know, it seems like if there's a large amount of overdoses in one area, maybe that should be traveling.
Let me respond to that. Been pretty involved in that, and that's a political question. Under Kentucky law, you have to have the approval of both, if the location is in city. You have to have the approval of both the county government and city government to have a needle exchange facility, operation, mobile unit, whatever it happens to be.
Right.
It's been a very difficult thing to achieve. In fact, this location actually is at the Physicians Office Building, which is in Newport, not in Fort Thomas.
Oh yeah, and I understand.
And it would probably take an hour and a half to go through everything that's happened to finally get to the point that one of these can be anywhere.
Sure.
In Campbell County, and also one in Kenton County. There's not one in Boone County. Couldn't get that done. So, you know, without going through, you know, a lot of detail on that, again, which would take a lot, you know, just, you know, I think the short answer is politically very, very, very difficult to achieve. Finally got something done, and, you know, maybe the only place it could get done, not even in the best way to do it. A lot of flaws in it, but it's a place, and it's a start.
And I understand that, I just, this is just coming from just a guy who's a nurse, been in the ER, but, you know, these are my patients every day, and I just hope that there aren't, you know, we bring that, and we bring people that are involved in that with it, just, you know, again, this is our community, and I just hope it doesn't, you know.
I'd like to add something. Roger already touched on it. It's not in Fort Thomas that we didn't vote to bring it here?
No, no, and I know that, I just don't know where else.
It's placed on the outskirts of Newport, almost in Fort Thomas, close enough to Fort Thomas that will affect, it could potentially affect us, but it's, you know, I just want to reiterate the fact that we did not.
Oh, no, no, yeah, I'm just, I only came up because the guys from St. E were up here. Oh no, yeah, I just, I can turn around.
So, I'm sorry. Fort Thomas has no St. E because it's a matter of feet from the actual city line of Fort Thomas.
It's not in Fort Thomas.
And I understand, I'm sorry in this life, when I just talk online all the time. But, so going back to your point, this is an hour and a half explanation, so, but at the end of the day, barring, I'd be happy to read any minutes that you would like to share with us. I still don't understand why there, your answer, while I think you may have thought of it as an answer, was a non-answer. So, if this opioid epidemic, which I work in healthcare too, I see it, I get it, but it doesn't seem like that would be the most logical location, and while I think what you're trying to say is that at least we got one somewhere, that that is the answer to that question, but that does not seem like where the crowd of folks that maybe would need that service. folks that maybe would need that service would be. Yeah, I'm not naive, I don't walk around like my Aunt Mary, like everything's wonderful in life, but I know that there are issues out there, and we have an issue with someone in my neighborhood, and I get that, but it doesn't seem like that is the most viable place for that. So, and leading up to what else we're going to talk about, storage units, so we have a limited number of accessways into our city. So, at why we're going to have a needle exchange, at what we're going to potentially have a giant ugly storage building, and in my mind, that is not why I moved here and paid twice what my houses were, to move here from Kenton County and put my child in this school district. And, and again, I'm very fortunate that I've not been heavily impacted aside from him with the opioid epidemic, not that he uses them, but he has to see it every day, and I'm lucky enough to hear about all the dead people when he comes home. But it doesn't seem like that is within what the vision and what the sales pitch of Fort Thomas is. So, and yes, I know it's on the edge, it's technically Newport, I get it, I get it, but I'm still proceeding down that road directly into Fort Thomas, it's a matter of steps for us. And I'm just curious why there? It is not where I believe or where I think the general public believes is the greatest need. I'm questioning the ability to impact folks so far out of maybe the target area, so...
I'm sure the answer is, I mean, it really is what I said. You could probably pick the area where you think it would be the best, and I can tell you, politically, it would never be approved. It hasn't been, they tried. Couldn't get it approved.
And I realize that's a very simple question that does not have a very simple answer.
Right.
And that makes absolutely no sense.
First of all, I want, one thing that needs to be clear is this doesn't really have to do with the addictive nature of, of the opioid problem. Really has to do with the spread of HIV and hepatitis C.
Oh, and that's the first thing, infected needles.
Well, and I know that the audience may not be aware of that, so, you know, infected needles, spread these, I mean, probably people worse not far from us, or the county in Indiana that had this massive outbreak of HIV and hepatitis C because of dirty needles. That's the intent of that program, is to stop the spread of that disease, which, in particular in the case of hepatitis, can be transmitted by other methods. So, the more people that have hepatitis C, it puts everybody at risk. So, there's some, certainly some value in doing that. Now, you know, the best place to put it, I, I mean, I, I don't know, that would be speculation. It's not where the Health Department and other healthcare providers wanted it to be. It's not being done in the way they want it to be, but it's the best they could get, and you just compromise on things. I'm sure there's all kinds of things in your life that aren't the best, but they're, they're, they're what you could do. So, you know, it's, it's just one of those things.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to address counsel on any other issue? All right. We're going to move the agenda, move the ordinances on the text amendment, on the self-storage facilities up to now on the agenda, if you don't mind, since I think that's what most people are here. And Jan, if you would give us an update on the procedure and how we're supposed to go about this.
My name is Jan Seidenvein, and I'm the attorney for the city, and I also work with the planning commission here. There has been a lot of confusion about text amendments and zone changes. So, what I'd like to do is to try to explain briefly the difference and what we are dealing with tonight in our next meeting, and what we're not dealing with, so that you can distinguish the two. And it is an important distinction. The city of Fort Thomas has a zoning ordinance, and it's this booklet, it's about this thick, and it talks about zoning classifications, what can be built in what zones, landscaping, lighting, parking, development, definitions, it's verbiage, it's words, it's a text. That's what we are talking about, or what the hearing was about. It was about a text amendment, which is wording in the zoning ordinance. The text amendment dealt with adding a definition of what a self-storage facility is, and it also dealt with adding the self-storage facility as a permitted use in a general commercial zone. Okay? That's what is under discussion, okay? What is not under discussion is a zone change. In addition to this text, we also have a map, and the map has everybody's property and what zone you're in, whether you're in a residential zone, or a commercial zone, or a highway commercial zone, or an industrial zone. So, this is a map, that's the zoning part of, this is not a map amendment of anybody's real estate. So, we're not taking any parcel of real estate and changing it from one designation to another. So, for example, if it was a residential zone, it's not being changed to any other zone. So, it's not a zone change that we're talking about, it's only a text amendment. Now, and this is the part where I won't be popular, but I'll tell you how it works. The way the Kentucky revised statute outlines this procedure, we obviously have to adhere to that. It's the law. The requirement is that the planning commission publish that we're going to have a hearing on the text amendment. And there was a publication, there were notices, and on June 20th, we were here for two hours plus, and the planning commission, not city council, the planning commission took evidence and information and testimony, they received a letter in as an exhibit, they received a petition signed by some property owners. So, anybody who wanted to come, any one of you, could have come on June 20th, and you could have addressed the planning commission with the reasons you're either for it or you're against it. At the conclusion of that hearing on June 20th, that is our record, and the record ends there. We cannot accept any more comments, or emails, or phone calls, or letters, because that is the record that the city council now reviews and makes a decision as to whether they will follow the recommendation of the planning commission, or whether they won't follow the recommendation. So, they have to, you have to limit somehow, what is it that they're going to be reviewing? And so, the Kentucky statute said, this is what you're going to review. You're going to review the transcripts and the evidence that was taken on June 20th. You are not in a position to go out and talk to all your friends, or elicit comments, or receive your phone calls, or your emails, or even your comments tonight. Those things are, cannot be introduced into a record, and they cannot influence the council members. The council members have a definite limitation. So, I'm sure quite a few of you wanted to come and to address counsel tonight, and tell them how you felt about things. That opportunity was on June 20th, and it doesn't exist tonight. So, no one, and if any council member sees you, and you try to talk to them, or if you send them a letter and they don't respond to it, or you send them an email and they don't open it, it's not because they're being rude, or inconsiderate, or that they've already made up their minds, it's that they know they have an obligation to limit their review to what was put on that record on June 20th. I know, I've heard that some people have tried to contact council members, sent letters, sent emails, they cannot open those, they can't review them, and they can't entertain that information. So, now, I want to also, though, make a comment about a zone change. If a zone change occurred, if somebody asks for a zone change on any property, it's a similar procedure in terms of, again, there would be a hearing at a planning commission level, that's your opportunity to come and give your input. Okay? So, I would just suggest if you're interested in the planning commission and the process, there is a difference between text amendment and zoning map amendment. We are not changing anybody zoning on their land tonight, and we're actually not doing any text tonight. It's just a first reading of an ordinance, and then the next meeting, there would be a second reading of the ordinance, and then there would be a vote at that time. Yes, sir?
I have a question then. So, if I live in a residential area, and I want, and I wanted to approach you all for a text amendment, so that I can put up a gas station on my residential property, let's just call it a text amendment, then we can proceed on that, on that basis?
Well, first of all, you...
Essentially, that's what we're doing here, but this property was not...
Okay, we're not going to talk about this case. I'll, I'll just answer your question, but we're not going to get into these specifics. If you wanted, wait a, can I finish this answer, please? If you wanted to have any kind of a text amendment, you go to the planning commission, and you tell them what your request is. But you have to, when you say you want a gas station on a residential property, a gas station is not a permitted use on a residential property, so you can't do that.
As not as a storage facility in terms of...
We're not going to talk about this case.
What if you feel like the city didn't properly advertise for this text amendment? Personally, I do not get the Campbell County recorder, and if it had not been for Fort Thomas living, I live at the crossings of Fort Thomas, which is going to affect this property.
Okay, we're not going to talk about this.
I know, we're not, but this is what I'm saying.
Well, you're talking about advertising, and, you know, it's advertised...
I'm not talking about the project.
No, but it's...
There was nothing posted, and when I talked to the city, they said you don't have to post, because it involved so many different areas of the city. So, when it comes for the zoning change, it'll be posted, but we had no idea, and so the board at the crossings of Fort Thomas met with Mr. Heil...
Okay, we're not going to talk about this case.
I know, but you've got to hear this.
No, no.
You rely to...
No, I'm sorry, we, this is not part of this.
You all need to hear this.
Okay, why don't you do that after this issue?
Well, then, who are we supposed to talk to?
Well, what I'm saying is, after this issue is resolved, and a vote is taken, say, after next month's meeting, come back and say, can you improve your communication? Can you get the word out on zone changes or text amendments? But we're not going to talk about the specifics of this case.
Even though we were told that there was no vote that would be taken at that meeting, as we were told by Mr. Heil, there would be...
Okay, again, again, you are giving information that should not be given at this time.
I'm Mary Healy, I live at 110 Hollywood's Drive, and I'm not going to talk about this case. I'm going to talk about the U-Haul that is adjacent to what was owned by Mr. Heil. It's as to his character, and it has, it has to do with, not this case, I just want to make sure that the city council is aware of this. I was not at that meeting, I was at the, out of the country where there was a hearing, but I heard about it. I would ask Ron Dill, I understand that Mr. Heil said that he cut grass, contrary to what my photograph showed, that he cut grass before Memorial Day.
Excuse me, now, is this something he said in the hearing? Then we're back to the hearing again, and we can't talk about that.
Well, I'm talking about the U-Haul facility. So, I, I will ask Ron Dill, that last spring, a year ago, I had a phone conversation with you about the U-Haul facility. You told me that you had spoken to Mr. Heil about the maintenance and improvements of it. You told me he told you that he was going to do landscaping, he was going to do some repaving, and he was going to do something to camouflage the unsightly vehicles that were there. You told me that he said he would do that when the weather broke. I had a conversation with you then, later last year, a year ago in the summer, and you said he reneged on that, and you said that he wasn't legally obligated to do that. Do you remember those conversations, Mr. Heil?
Not specifically in that text, no.
Gee, that's very interesting, you don't remember that.
No, it's not, please let me answer the question. You, you have repeated multiple times that we've had multiple conversations, and I don't recall that we've had multiple conversations. You've had multiple conversations with people in our office, but not specifically me.
I had two conversations with you.
You're crediting me with conversations that I don't recall specifically, but with regard to the issue of screening, first of all, I was not engaged in, in, in the process when it went through planning and zoning with the owners of that property. I don't know who owns that property specifically. I did share with you that I had conversations with Mr. Heil, who indicated that he had intentions of doing additional screening, okay? And, and that's true.
And to your knowledge, he has not?
Correct, he has not.
I also understand that Mr. Heil, and I even heard Mr. Peterman repeat this at a May meeting, that he has let this council know, and maybe the council's aware without him knowing, that he purports to pay a lot of taxes to the city. I would like it clarified that he, the taxes that he remiss to the city, I assume the major amount of the taxes are taxes he collects from his employees for employment tax. So, the taxes do not come out of his pocket, and I would like the city to be reminded of that. There are also one thing that I want to ask about the vision program that is going on with the city. I, I've served on that zoning and planning committee. It appears to me that the city has invested a lot of money into that zoning and planning committee. I don't know if the council can share with me how much it has paid, but I assume it's ongoing. We have a person that shows up at that committee meeting that comes from Columbus, and I assume it's not cheap for her to attend those meetings, and I assume she devotes other times. I want to make sure that this council is aware that out of that zoning committee, there were a number of businesses that that committee thought that there was a need in Fort Thomas Four, and I invite you to look at that study, because nothing was mentioned about a proposal to the zoning change about that. Also, the Parks and Recreation Committee, which, Mayor Hoss, you mentioned to me in the May meeting, how much was going to be done for the South Corridor. And I just remind the council to keep that in mind, that what the vision is that by both the zoning committee and the Parks and Recreation, and I don't think it envisions certain types of businesses that certain people would like considered. Lastly, I want to mention that I heard the pledge to allegiance tonight, and it said injustice for all. And Mayor Hoss, I don't know if you're aware, and I don't know that anyone cares, but I do. I grew up in St. John's Church. I was four years ahead of you. You may not remember me, but your grandfather, Dr. Barcal, baptized and confirmed me. The first Bible verse that I learned was Luke 10:27, and it's, "Treat your neighbors as yourself." And I would like all of the council to remember these things, when it considers any change to this city that would have a long-ranging effect on this city. So, I think I have said things that do not affect directly tonight, but I want to make certain that council is aware of, not only tonight, but in the future, when it considers any changes, any zoning changes whatsoever which are proposed, and to please remember that the South End is a part of the city, and we want to contribute to the city maintaining its top place and not be a deterrent to it. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You know, one thing, one thing that, there was a joint meeting with all the committees, Naomi, their presentations, and I don't know, Mary, if you're aware of this, but one of the most exciting things I came away with from that, because I wasn't aware of it myself, was, and Ron, you're going to have to help me with terminology, there's this joint grant that all the cities along the US-27 corridor are applying for to redevelop all the way from the river out to NKU. And, you know, joint effort, they're, you know, making grant money and so forth available, you know, very high potential. So, you know, that's obviously, the US-27 goes through the south part of the city, that's what you're talking about.
That's what I'm talking about.
That may be something you want to get involved with. We, I mean, I don't know that the grant is, I don't, I don't remember...
It's actually, it's a smart city initiative, and actually, St. Eats is a partner in that group.
Well, that's right.
So, that's what I want to make certain I... I don't know if I can say this, but I'm going to say this. I don't know how the planning committee is selected, I don't know how often they're changed, but I do think that that planning committee was not aware of possibly the Parks and Recreation desire for the South End. And that's why, I also know that Mr. Peterman told me at the last meeting that it's very rare for city council to vote contrary to the recommendations. I think this is an instance where the council really needs to...
Okay, we're going into a specific case again.
I would hope that the city council, the buck stops there, and I hope you always second-guess what has been proposed to you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So, Jan, do you have a... Where are we at this point? This is for...
I think you have one more comment.
Okay.
I just have a question for you. I tried to listen carefully to how I set up the context here tonight, and I want to make sure it's clear on what procedure was. And, actually, I'm Martha Kaufman, I live on Hawthorne Avenue. And I was wondering, like, how people were notified, if there was going to be the planning and St. Eats hearing? Was it mailed? Was it posted? I wasn't sure how that took place.
I believe it was...
Well, by statute, you're required to advertise it.
Advertise it.
And the publication of record is the recorder, and that's, we don't have any control over that. That's where we're required to advertise it.
But with due respect, how many people go to the recorder and say, oh, let me see what the city of Fort Thomas is getting ready to do? I mean, people don't do that.
Well, I understand that, I'm just saying, that's our required publication.
But that's, that's under Kentucky revised statute.
Yeah, that's the...
That's what we have...
That's what we have to do.
It was absolutely in there.
I don't know.
It was on the Planning Commission as well as the Board of Adjustments for this city. And things were always posted so that you could see around your neighborhood what was going on. That did not happen.
When it's specific to a site, then, and the petition is for a specific site, then it's placed at that location. It's required by law to do that. And yes, the recorder, the recorder is the publication of record, and every city in the county has all of their information regarding their public meetings in that paper.
We would not know about it had it not been for Fort Thomas.
I know there's been, there's been an attempt in Frankfurt for years, and I don't know if it's passed yet, to try to change that so that we can use other methods of notification instead of a, the recorder, a lot of the papers are still in business just because cities by law have to give notice in those papers.
And my point, how would we know? Gee, maybe it's time that we looked at the recorder and see what's going. I mean, that just doesn't happen.
And I understand, and to answer your question a little further, Laura, if I could, when you have a specific property, that same statute dictates how you make individual notifications. But when it doesn't affect an individual property, the city has no way other than sending a letter to every single resident, because we would never know who would be interested. We would never know who all was interested. We post it generically, generally, as we're required to and as we can.
But this is not a neighborhood. See, we keep going back to thinking this is a neighborhood. This is a text amendment for the entire city.
Hi, I'm Tom Morrison.
There's five locations that can be involved in this. That's my understanding. Inverness and House.
Okay, let's not get into the specifics.
Can I talk about the general concept?
They don't want to hear the truth.
Sure.
I'm hearing Tom Morrison, 96 Hawthorne. I'm hearing that there is a legal obligation to post the notice in the Campbell County Recorder Five. Is there a legal limitation on other magnitudes? Could you provide a system on your website that people can sign up and be on an email distribution and know what the next document is for the specific planning council?
You know, I was going to ask, I was going to ask that question. I'm an attorney, and part of my responsibility is dealing with legal publications. In fact, I can tell you, I drafted a bill to change it. This session of the General Assembly didn't get changed. And so my question was going to be, well, what do you think would be adequate? And one of the ideas was to put it on the internet. Now, to me, that has two values. One, it's efficient, an efficient way to get the information out to everybody if they're going to look at it. But it also promotes engagement. I mean, we want people engaged. You know, this, the city is always going to run better. Any organization is going to run, any community is going to run better, the more input that you can get to make decisions. And so, and so, but people actually would have to go to the site to do it. So, so I don't know. I mean, that's a General Assembly question. They create those laws that we have to follow, but.
So the question is, does the law say that there's a?
Well, we could put it on a website.
Does the law say there's a limitation that you can only do it these ways?
Yeah, we can do more than the minimum. Yeah, you could do more than the minimum.
Sure.
Exactly.
You could put it on the website, so you'd go to the website and say.
So I'm asking you to consider alternate methods that are still within the law, may not be required, but are more likely to reach more people because clearly, as we've seen in specific cases that I will not mention, has not gone off very well.
Thank you.
No, but I will say this about websites, too, is that then there's personal responsibility, too, because then you have to go and look for it.
Sure.
So, you know.
Sure.
And I'm not saying that, you know, to be critical or anything, that's just, you know, sort of the way things, and I think it would be great if people would do that and if that would be done, yeah.
My name is Elizabeth Yingling, and I live at 111 Alexandria Park with that very young lady over there who addressed you earlier. And in addition to that, there's no easy way to find any notifications from the city government. I've had to film the meetings before, and I've looked for schedules for just this basic city council meetings, and it's very difficult to navigate the website and discover it. We don't have any email systems that we can get notifications from. And as an 18-year-old, I don't read the Fort Thomas Recorder. That's not something that I do. And you have my address. It's your job as a representative constituents of this town to make sure that we have these things, and make sure that we know when things are happening that we can ask us.
Okay, thank you. Yes, there's someone else. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sandra Morrison, 96 Hawthorne. We have a simple solution. I drive from Mount Adams every day, and they just put a real estate sign, similar real estate signs, a city council meeting tonight, 7:00 PM. It's very simple, very low-tech, and everybody who tries to drive in our city, if you have it in every entrance, would see it. Thank you.
Hey, Eric.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
Hi, my name is Michelle Nida, live at 21 Woodland Place. And I just wanted to address the council tonight, not on the issue that is sensitive, but I do want to share, you probably already know, I hope you are, I hope you already know, about the visioning committees and what we've talked about. And when we talk about smart growth along 27, we don't want to look like Highland Heights, and we don't want to look like any, we don't want to look like Colrain Avenue. When we talk about smart growth, we're talking about multimodal paths, talking about medians, we're talking about road diets, we're talking about bike lanes, we're talking about connecting communities in such a way that people eight to 80 can enjoy. People on Hollywood's can walk to Tower Park without getting run over. Kids can cross from Woodfield to the YMCA without their lives being in danger. We're talking about making our city on the South End what it is in the middle and maintaining that. It is bucolic. It is the parklight setting that we all love to live in, and we don't have to change anything on the South Side for economic development. What we need to change on the South End is to bring it more in line with what we have on the North End. We need the park benches. We need the planters. We need the sidewalks. We need the access. And if we're going to create this Mecca of this health and wellness trail system that we want, we need to be able to connect NKU with Riverfront Commons. And no way is anyone going to be able to get from that desert of NKU over to Fort Thomas without real regional collaboration. And that's what we're talking about, is you've got to be able to get people on foot, on bike, over here without them risking their lives. And you can't do that today. And that cemetery that's located over on 27 is beautiful. And we all know what Spring Grove is. It's a destination. They hold 5Ks. People walk. It's pleasant. It could be the same here, except you can't get to it. Right? And so I think we owe it to our community to just start to think more about what our visioning committees were put together to achieve and understand why we've come up with the solutions, the ideas that we've proposed, okay? We really want to work together, and that regional collaboration is so incredibly important. And guys, when we get down even to the bottom, near the highway, it doesn't mean that we just throw our hands in the air and say, it's a wasteland. No, there are children walking from St. Therese down Milk Road, and they have no sidewalks. They have no place to get to those apartments where they live. And as a regional partner in all of this, we need to think about connectivity and not about separating folks. And so I want to leave that with you, and I want you to know that, again, those visioning committees, folks spoke, people put their ideas on paper, and it's really the voice of the city. It's what we want.
Great, thank you very much.
Rick Wagner, 67 Hollywood. I know we're not allowed to talk about that, but I want to share these.
No, if there are pictures.
This is U-Haul. And this is how they take care of the property, and you can pass them around. If you look, this was June 13th, okay? That's how it looked. June 27th, that's how it looked. Finally, July 11th, they just threw the garbage can away then and got rid of it. But that's how they take care of U-Haul. And that's what we're afraid it's going to look like the rest of this. You know, the last time we were here, the last meeting, we brought up a couple of things about traffic. Is there any thought in war about making them, putting up parking spots in that building at the corner to have all their cars and not park them down our street? I said, why don't they tear those houses down and put in a parking lot for their businesses?
Have you had any conversations with them about that? I'm not sure what the question is. I mean, we, there were several items that were brought up. We did contact the Highway Department about the timing on the.
It's gotten a little better.
On the light. But, I mean, we're not in a position to demand somebody add more parking beyond their property.
Every place I've ever been, you had to have enough parking for your facility.
It's depending on how many square feet of occupancy the property has.
Okay.
Not how many employees are in the building.
Okay.
The way I understand it. Right, that's correct.
But, you know, if you're going to have a business, don't park down five, six houses down my street in front of my house.
Yeah.
And then, you know, I've been putting my cars, my old truck and my old car, I've been parking them on the street in front, so nobody can block. I couldn't get out of the driveway the last time, because they were parked within six inches of both sides of the driveway. And the thing was, the one was an old Chevy Suburban, and you could go down there right now and see it. It originally had Florida plates on it. Now it's got Ohio plates on it. And on the other side, there's a Pennsylvania plate on this other truck. You know, where are they coming from? And you're parked, and, you know, I know they said two feet from the sidewalk. How can I, you know, what do we do there, you know? But then, and the other thing, this we didn't bring up, but it's happened so many times in the last week. And Mary, you can tell me, how many times have you almost been hit coming up our street or coming in the street? Because we put a stop sign on Hill Street, so they have to stop before they pull out into traffic.
I'm not sure where that is. That's not a, that's not a street. That's a driveway.
It's all the condos, the old apartments behind.
Oh.
Kyle's building. And they don't have a stop sign. They just come flying right out in front of everybody.
Is that private or can we put?
It's because the people on Hill Street can't see because of all cars.
Well, that's true. Because they let them park all the way to 27. You know, it's, to me, I still think parking should only be allowed on one side of that street. I would talk to you, you know, it's, I want to put more, it's too dangerous to have parking on both sides of that street, especially when they're almost to the corner, and somebody comes in off of 27, and there's people coming out. Where do you go? There's only one lane.
Are you talking about the entire street or the portion at the top of the street?
I'd say the whole street. Now we keep them parked up there. They can find someplace else to park instead of down in front of the residential.
That's the rule of council, and we're going to have our traffic engineers look at restricting parking. Usually it has to do with site distance issues and that type of thing.
Well, especially, you come off, you know, you're coming out or coming in off of 27, and there's somebody coming out, and there's only one lane. Where do you go? It's, you know, and between that and the ones flying out of Hill Street, those condos and out of that building, they come out, it may not all be Hill Street, some of it's coming out of the parking lot on our street, too. But someone's going to get hurt, and that, maybe that's what it'll take.
Could you make a resident parking-only zone down there on that street, or is that restricted?
But that's a.
But is that residential where the apartments be residential?
Well, yeah, if they live.
Those people at least. But, you know, maybe if they didn't have, you know. Have you been, have anybody, you guys driven down?
Yeah, it's a problem. It's a bad problem. There's no doubt about it.
And then like that big Kenire truck sitting at the corner?
That's really tough when there's cars parked.
You get a truck on both sides of it. And like I said, we come out.
I drove down after the last time you came to me, and I looked at it and.
You've seen where I am, which, I got a telephone pole here, and I got cars parked on both sides of the driveway. And with the big van, I cannot turn to get out of it when there's trucks on the other side.
I mean, we can look at it, and just keep in mind a couple of things as we have this discussion. We can have our engineers look at it, and they will evaluate it based on traffic standards and site distance and so forth. Limiting the parking, first of all, if you, the more parking you take off-street, the more demand there's going to be for parking. If people are there, they're going to need to park. So if you eliminate them at the top, they may end up further down the street. To answer your question about resident parking, we've never really employed a resident parking. It's a difficult managing tool for the police department or any agency that, we don't have city stickers, we don't have parking stickers, to manage who's a resident or not a resident or visiting a resident versus somebody who's parking there for a different reason.
Maybe we need to go back to city stickers. And make it residents only.
I'm just saying, it's difficult to manage.
Businesses can't hit them for their.
Public parking spaces on-street to who parks where. We receive complaints periodically about so-and-so parks in front of my house, why don't they park in front of their own house? It's a similar type of issue. But we can look at the standards for site distance, and perhaps there's some issues related to that from an engineering standpoint that could address some of the concern at the top of the street.
But there's nothing, nothing for an apartment building has to provide their people so many parking spots.
Everything in the, every use in the zoning text has requirements for off-street parking, but you have to keep in mind that if those things are already developed under that ordinance, you can't go back and say, well, now you have more cars, because you ran to somebody that has six cars, now you have to add parking space. We don't have that latitude as a city to require after the fact, somebody to add additional parking spaces on their location. Well, we will take a look at it and see if there's something, we can come up, some ideas we can come up with to maybe help the situation. All right.
I've addressed one question.
Hi, I'm Bart Yingling, and I'm at 111 Alexandria Park with that very young lady over there who addressed you earlier. I do look at the recorder. She doesn't, but frequently, it's very hard to even decipher in the recorder what are the annual budget reporting? I mean, there's this plethora of reporting on that last little section, along with the auctions and so on. I mean, I do kind of look at it, you know, from back, and I didn't see anything like this. So I am late to the party. I also will tell you to delete the email that I sent to you earlier today. I'll save it for later because it will become an issue potentially later to address. A question I have about process, because I'm learning about this process as a result of this text ordinance amendment. How would, how do, how does, what initiates the need for a text ordinance amendment? So we have one here of a language change, basically, or adding a definition, because I did look at our ordinance and saw all the definitions, which is common in a legal document. So what prompted the need for us to even have?
Well, a resident can come, or a person, an owner, somebody can come to Planning Commission and say, I would like you to consider this amendment. And Planning Commission can make a decision. We'll air this issue. We'll see if people are in favor or not. Is this a good idea or not? So the Planning Commission actually schedules the hearing. But it's usually initiated by a request from a citizen.
From a citizen, okay. Do you have the actual text, what the definition is? Because I looked online and could find no record online, anyway, of the Planning Commission meeting, what the, who was, who was there, what the actual text is for tonight?
Do we post it in their minutes? We do the council minutes, not the planning commission? I mean, they're up record in the city clerk's office.
Right, but not posted anywhere. I mean, you'd have to come here and report. So would you read it? Would you read it publicly as part of this?
Yeah, I mean, if you have your emails, scan it on an email. I mean, if we get a question, we'll send it to you.
Again, understanding process. So it will become part of the proceedings as a result of tonight's reading. That document will become part of the council minutes, then?
Yes.
And are those posted online?
Yes.
Yes. So after the fact, we will get to read the text of the.
We're going to read it out loud.
Right, in just a few minutes.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So we'll get to hear that. Right, okay, so we'll get to hear that. So, that was another, just a procedural question I'm kind of trying to better understand. And then, I guess, the question from the Planning Commission side in terms of, you know, just your decision-making as well. What criteria does Planning Commission use to determine the appropriateness of that request? So, in other words, if I came in and I said, I would like to add as a possible definition an adult venue in Fort Thomas, you know, that I would like to have some sort of an adult bar or whatever in Fort Thomas. There would be, I guess, my request would initiate that process. Then what do they do to deter, what criteria do they use to determine if that's an appropriate request?
Well, they would look at other uses in that zone, is it compat, is it compatible with the other uses in the zone? If you would look at our.
So, I thought you said it wasn't about zone.
No, in that zone. For example, if you have a single family and you want to put an adult bookstore in your house, and you want them to do a text amendment saying you can have adult bookstores in residential zones, not at your particular house, but in general, in a residential zone, then they would look at the, at the planning and zoning ordinance, and they'd say, is this compatible with other uses? What do we have envisioned in a planning process for single-family residential zones? Do we think of adult bookstores as a good idea?
So, then, the, is it on record as to the citizen who initiated this request?
Mm-hmm, it was Bob Hile. It was, it was at Senate Public Meeting.
Okay, and it was as a, and that would be because he is?
I, I don't know, and I'm not gonna go into that, because we're back to.
Well, I guess, we're back to specifics. Because you just said that the committee, okay, so let me back up. So, the committee then looked at his request related to his ownership.
No, no.
Well, you just told me that if I made the request, you'd look at my ownership.
But you said you wanted it in your house, and that's specific to your residence.
Well, he wants.
This is just a text amendment saying, I would like, if you want a definition in something, and you want that, that use in that zone.
Okay, so any general.
It's not specific to a property, it's specific to any general commercial zone property.
As would be my request in any residential.
Correct.
Okay, I get that. So, any general commercial zone is what the request has been, to allow self-storage.
And I don't want to get into all this again.
Well, I'm not, but I'm, but that's what we're looking at, right? Self-storage definition.
Correct.
In any general commercial zone in the city.
Correct.
That was the request.
That's the request, correct, and that's what you'll be voting on tonight?
No.
Or you'll be reading first, second, and then voting.
That is the issue, yes.
Okay, so that would mean that somebody in the Midway District that suits general commercial could potentially, if you, if this is read and approved, could put a.
Well, there's four, there's four other, there's four locations in the community, but the Midway is not a good example, because it's a central business district, different zoning classification.
Okay, because I tried to kind of see that on the map, the GCs and.
There's four general commercial zoning districts, it would apply to any one of those four.
Any of those general.
To allow that as a permitted use, if it's approved as a text amendment. Then, any individual property owner could request it in any one of those zones for that use.
And would they, that's carrying that out to the next level, as long as it's part of the definitions, and it is, you know, approved for general commercial, any person within there, you'd be hard pressed to say no to.
It's a permitted use.
It's a permitted use.
It's just like if you're in a single-family zone, and you want to build a single-family house, it's a permitted use.
So, once it's approved in any general commercial, any general commercial owner could then put it in that.
It would be required to go through planning and zoning for a development plan for a specific location.
Could hardly be denied.
What are the four different locations?
Um, I think.
Inverness and Highland.
Inverness, Highland Plaza, the Fort Thomas Plaza on 27, and the portion in the corridor on 27. Not, not both sides, but portions of that corridor.
And then, I guess, the last question, because not, if I had been able to read, I wouldn't be asking all these questions, but not having read or attended the, yeah, planning meetings. Did they look at, did they do any kind of demographic studies of?
Okay, we're getting back into that hearing, and we're not gonna go there.
Can't talk about the hearing at all.
But, just for the record, we did transcribe the hearing.
Yes.
And that is a document available in our office, so anybody's welcome to view that or request a copy of it.
And we would request that through Melissa.
Yeah.
And she can email that even directly to us before the next reading.
And if I understand what Jan is telling us, we use this document.
Right.
To make our decision and our discussion amongst us.
And I guess what I'm just asking is, is in that document out here, you know, is there?
We're not gonna go into all that.
Get it read.
Sorry, sorry.
I'm Tiffany Puber, 26 Hawthorne, and I'd like to know what the process is to reverse the text amendment. So, what do we do if we want the text taken out of there?
Well, first of all.
And I request that today as part of coming to the city council meeting.
That's a good question.
Okay, the text amendment has not been.
I'm not talking about what, I'm just talking about, I would like to, if this gets passed, we'll just say, if this gets passed, because everybody knows what I'm talking about, I would like to request, as coming to city council tonight, a reversal, I would like to request that that be revisited. So, how do I go about that process?
You would approach.
Different Senate bill that goes to Congress.
You would approach Planning Commission, and you would ask for a text amendment?
Okay. I'm asking you for that tonight, but I will.
No, it goes to planning, it goes to Planning Commission.
So, but that, that, you know, the process, I'm assuming, Jan, and I don't know the answer to this, that the process is not, legal process isn't necessarily over with the council's decision either, I mean, can you appeal that? Can you, I guess you're gonna litigate anything.
Anybody can sue anybody at any time for anything.
You can go to Circuit Court and challenge the decision.
Clear to this point as to what, how, how we voice our opinions as citizens, long-term citizens of Fort Thomas. And, I mean, I've lived on that street for 26 years, on Hawthorne. So, I am concerned about the beautification of our city, and I want you to be concerned about it, and I want you to know that if this were in your backyard, would you want it?
Okay, we're getting back into the specifics of this case, okay, and we just, we can't do that.
I just asked what the process was.
No, but I mean, now you're getting.
So, go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for a meeting. Is that the?
You would ask for a text amendment, if you wanted.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm Martha Kaufman, and I live at 64 Hawthorne, and I'm just gonna say, I taught school here for 16 years, and I'm very proud of all my students and all the hard work, love and energy I put into their lives. Okay, next thing I'm gonna say is, it seems like we've kind of missed the vote in getting our voices heard before the planning, the zoning committee. And so, now, I'm kind of curious as to what the evidence are, because I feel like if I heard you correctly, we cannot submit letters, and we cannot speak directly to this specific issue before the council, and so, I'm feeling like we could have, like, a public protest march, is that something we could do? I do know how to organize, by the way. And, because I really feel like there's more people who are very unaware of what's happening and what could possibly happen. And so, I feel like for the city to make the best decision, excuse me, I'm getting a little nervous here, but that's all good, that for the city to make the best decision, they need the best information from as many citizens that it will affect as possible, both now and in the future. So, I, I need to know, like, what are some of our evidence besides possibly a protest march before the next August meeting? Because I feel like we can't send letters, and those will not be read, is that what you said?
That's correct.
Okay.
The opportunity was on June 20th. I, I know that's not making any of you happy, and I'm not inventing that rule, that's the Kentucky revised statutes that's telling us how we process this.
When evidence passed, we're done. There's nothing else that citizens can't.
Correct.
I'm Mary Healy, and hopefully, third time will be the charm. I don't think it's any secret here how I feel about things. Let me assure people in this room who feel like I do, that there will be another opportunity if and when there's a proposal to change the zoning of two residences on Pike 27, to object to that, and I think we will be far more ready for that at that time. I'm Mary Healy, out of the One Hundred Hollywood Drive, fine. So, I, I hope that helps people, that this is only to allow a storage facility in Fort Thomas, it's not to allow a specific storage facility in a specific place that will require rezoning. And I believe that does require better notification than the other one does. So, we will have a second fight at the apple if city council doesn't do the right thing the first time. And I will just.
Okay, we're back to this case here.
I, I would like to end with a fact. I am very glad to hear that it sounds like city council is able, and it sounds like willing to read the record, because there was a lot of information introduced on the record. I'd also say a fact, that on March 12, 2000, Timothy McVeigh took ballmaking equipment from a self-storage facility into a U-Haul, and we know what happened. So, I would like to make sure that city council is aware of that fact. It's a fact, and I just, that is all I'm saying.
Mary, the next zoning meeting is actually before we cast a vote, his application for the zone change on the property in question. I don't want to get specific, but the zoning board meets before our next plant, or our next regular council meeting, actually, on the 15th of August is their.
Are you saying, Councilman Bowman, that we could ask them to reverse their vote?
I don't think that can happen, but I'm just saying that the next planning and zoning meeting that may be dealing with everybody's concerns will be on the 15th, and we.
Oh, well, I'm understanding that that's supposed to be posted, and I have not seen a posting of a recommended.
Let's not all get ahead of ourselves. If there's an application, it will be advertised as required. We do not have an application.
Thank you. I live very close, I monitor that very closely.
And please read the recorder, and you'll see all the notices for all of our public meetings.
You know, this council meeting, Ron, did you know about this zoning thing at the last council meeting that we talked about Hollywood and all that stuff? Because I didn't hear anything about it till afterwards. Did we even know about it at that meeting? Did anybody know?
This is not a zone change, this is a text amendment.
No, I didn't say it's a change. I just said, did anybody know about it at the council meeting that they could have told all of us that were here that this was gonna be coming up?
Does the council announce?
Because we were here at council, and I didn't hear anything.
Things that are on the agenda for.
Council does not announce the agenda for planning and zoning. I answered your question. We have one of adjustment hearings every month, we have planning commission meetings every month, we have design review board meetings every month, we, I mean, they're all advertised and posted.
I think this would have been nice and.
It's rare that we know.
When we're talking about the South End and all this.
Right.
You would have thought, someone would have thought, hey, they might be interested in this and be able to come to something.
I mean, the point you're making is that people used to read the newspaper and see those things. The law hasn't caught up with what people do these days, it just hasn't. But, you know, understand from our point of view, there's somebody on the other side of this issue, and either side, if we don't follow the legal procedure, has a claim against what city council has done, we have to be very careful about following the law, we have liability.
We've been against the law and said we're having a zoning meeting about.
No, it's a different question, I'm just saying that that is what the law requires, we have to be very careful and aware of that.
Which one of our, would it be labor law license that would meet to say what might be a more effective way of advertising, and should we maybe approach that to revisit how, how we make our notices available?
I mean, we could, as a matter, we could have committee look at a policy that states other methods beyond, I mean, we'll meet our legal obligations always, and we do. But if you want, as a matter of policy, to have other types of notifications as part of that process, it could be referred to committee, and you could pass an ordinance that states a policy, an internal city policy, on how you advertise your public meetings.
I started tweeting last month, I could tweet some. I learned how to tweet.
I don't do that. It would be labor law license, we could probably, all that.
Yeah, okay, yes, sir.
I just wanted to make a comment to the council about being very careful when you vote on any issue that comes up from the Planning Commission. Don't just think about current plans of any sort that might be coming behind it. You make a change that's citywide, it could be something you don't expect. It might not be waiting on, for example, additional properties to be rezoned. You make these kind of changes, you may find somebody tears down a building and takes advantage of that zoning change where you least expected it. So, please take that into account. It's not all about those two properties, which I know I can't talk about.
I appreciate Cheryl's time. Yes.
My name is Dawn Hills, and I live at 115 Tremont Avenue, and I'm a 29-year teacher veteran at Woodville Elementary. Very briefly, I'd just like to mention that I think it's very telling that we are building new sidewalks on the north end of town, yet possible theoretical warehouses on the south end of town. There's a difference between the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. I have a real concern with how the spirit of the law was handled here. And in fact, I'd be very sad for my fifth graders to have witnessed it. You have maybe 40 people in this audience who would like to voice their concerns, and they don't have a mechanism for that. That should be addressed. Thank you.
Actually, I was, I was just going to say, I am very impressed, not only with everybody being here tonight, and I appreciate it very much, and also appreciate the citizens of, you guys are awesome people, and Jan laid out what our restrictions are by law, and you all did a great job of figuring out a way to express some opinions regardless. And that's impressive, that's very, and everybody's been very cordial about it, and I appreciate that very much. Yes, we have a difficult situation here. We've had some great ideas on how we can improve the information as it gets out, whether, so notices about these things in the future. Again, I appreciate everybody's comments. We will be dealing with the record, and the record, and I'm sure we've all read it, I've read it several times, there's a lot of information in this record from the meeting that is very pertinent information, and I feel confident that a lot of the information that we need is within this record for us to be able to not get in trouble. So, anyway, yes, ma'am.
Just one final comment, again, I have lived at the location 1111 Alexandria Pike for 30 years in October. So, many of you probably have driven past my house, and I, you know, people ask, where do you live? I used to live next to the Purple House. Anybody who knows Kim Owens Plummer made that purple, now it's gray. So, I can't use that as a milestone anymore, or any kind of a mark. We kind of jokingly, in the South End, talk about the South End, the South Side, as the ghetto end of Fort Thomas. I don't know if you've ever heard that, but that's kind of the joke, that once you get past the Y, it just isn't the same. You know, my house is valued at $140,000 by the Campbell County PVA. You know, I have 200-something thousand dollars in it. I don't want to pay any more taxes, but at the same time.
Don't put your on right here now.
At the same time, I hope if I get to sell it, or when I get to sell it, it will be worth more than $140,000. There is a property not very far down the road from me, that used to be Segura's Chiropractic that has been, I guess, rezoned back into residential, because I presume it must have been a different zoning, that is gorgeous, that has been refurbished, beautified, I mean, it is amazing. That property, I looked on PVA today, the exact replica of that property on Riverside or Riverview Avenue, exact replica, same house, is $100,000 less in value on the PVA than the one on Riverview. There's one very similar on Linden, where my sister lives. It's rated at $385,000, same basic house. So, we recognize that part of the reason I moved to the South End of Fort Thomas from West Villa, where I lived in a two-family initially, was because I could afford to go there. They are starter homes, they are small cottages, or they're country homes like mine, that have a brick-and-rack front porch, my little country home in the city, five minutes from the interstate, all you on the north side have to drive all different places, it'll be home from the Reds game attendance. You know, there are values to that community, and I do have neighbors on 27, you know, didn't want to buy that house. I looked everywhere, but we bought that house, and drove past it every time I went to IGA. Look at that cute house sitting down there, you know, with the Adirondack chairs on the front porch. And finally said, I'm gonna go look at it, even though I had a contract on another house, because I thought, I gotta look at that house. I love it, been there 30 years. You know, there have been changes to the US 27 corridor, going three lanes from four, made a huge difference. I can sit on my front porch and watch rear-end accidents every day, people waiting to turn left and van sup, and, you know, happened all the time. I was the first one calling 911 before cell phones. That was an improvement. It changes the speed, people aren't speeding past people, but it is, I, you know, when my, that 18-year-old that just spoke to you was, you know, when I was taking her a walk in a stroller one day, you know, and somebody drove past at 35 miles an hour, and the grill off of, the top grid of a grip flew off and almost hit us in the stroller, you know, I don't really like to walk on 27, because it's not the safest place, you know? You couldn't go farther than the, than the tree in the yard. So, I mean, it is still a community, and I think when someone says to you, you're gonna look at a language change, a text amendment, that could impact only four parts of our city, and you don't know which four parts those are yet, that scares me as a citizen. We know it's the South End, and we know that's the impetus for the change. So, it goes back to why there is okay here and there because of existing zoning language, So, it goes back to why there is okay here and there because of existing zoning language, but not other places. And that kind of then gets to, you know, the next step, if there's to be one. So, I just think, again, you know, you are making a decision, as Tom said, that isn't about two properties or Mr. Hiles', you know, initiation of this text.
We're getting kind of site-specific again. Well, I just, you all kind of do this dance around.
A resident who brought up this particular language, the need for the language, you know, so that could manifest itself anywhere in the city that has those current zones, or should someone else change that. But I'm going to just reiterate the whole South Side, and I guarantee to you that I will become more involved in finding out what the vision is for the South Side, because...
Thank you.
That's important. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My name's Carl Herklotz. I live at 3 Beechwood. I've been there for almost 18 years. I've come to council meeting once in the past about this issue, and I'm kind of hoping I didn't, this was going on tonight. The, the walk around the reservoir, when they closed it up, you guys said you would revisit it. It came up once, and I haven't heard anything about that since. As a matter of fact, I think I talked to a couple people when they were walking around, running for council last time around about revisiting that issue. And they said, yeah, we want to bring that up, we want that to happen. But I've yet to hear any, any information about that happening again.
It actually has been discussed. You've heard some conversation about the visioning, and some of these individuals have sat through some of those meetings. It is, it is a topic in multiple committees of the visioning that have had conversation about, you know, what it would take to open that to the public. The city has had informal conversations with the New York County Water District, of course, after the facility. We are looking at, in that conversation, some possibilities, and they have softened their stance a little bit over time since the whole 9/11, throughout the barriers. And we're pretty optimistic that as we progress through this and look at our transportation plan and our walkability, that that will be addressed. And hopefully, there's some common ground with regard to our citizens' desire to be able to access it, and them being able to allow and still accomplish the safety aspect.
It was really great. I mean, when I first moved into Fort Thomas, that was open, and there was a constant stream of people walking through our neighborhood and going to that and walking around it. I mean, it was, it was great.
It might be more limited, but it might be a possibility.
Once, once you open up the gate, maybe more things happen afterwards. Now, this is a, this is a separate issue, but it kind of dovetails onto something that Tom brought up. On Robson Avenue, if you're familiar with it, coming off of Grand Avenue, there's a yellow line where people cannot park for a certain distance, but it's not long enough, in my opinion, and I'm asking for your guys' input on this. People come flying up Grand Avenue, and you're trying to get onto Robson, and there's traffic that's parked so close to that edge. Getting off of Grand Avenue into that area is too congested for somebody coming down a hillside at the same time without a possible conflict right there.
Okay.
I'm asking that that yellow line be extended.
Stand a little bit further.
Yeah, we certainly have an evaluation.
And the last thing I've got is, who can I get clarification on city ordinance relative to sewage? I asked Mr. Barbium, he talked to me over the phone and said it's a civil issue. And it, there's clear information in the ordinance, but it doesn't say whose responsibility and how to go about enforcing.
You're talking sanitary or storm?
Sanitation.
Okay.
I can get a little bit specific. I mean, there's three properties starting one line, and a line goes through another person's property ultimately after they're all joined. And one of the owners that's part of the three thinks that the person whose property is going through where the leak is, it's their responsibility to take care of it, which I think is a totally ridiculous.
I didn't catch your last name. I got your address.
Herklotz, 3 Beechwood.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Herklotz, B E R K L O T Z.
Let me check with Kevin, and we'll reach out to you to follow up.
Yeah, because I found the ordinance that covers that, but it doesn't, it doesn't lay clear liability on who the property owner is that's responsible for fixing said violation.
I'll, I'll review it with Kevin and he and/or I will be able to.
I would appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you all again very much. We shall get into the discussion.
I would, I mean, going back to the advertising issue, I really would like to see that addressed. And I'd, I'd like to make a motion that I guess labor law and license preview the issue and make a recommendation as to what could be done to change our, our minimum method and make it a little more effective.
I see it. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to add to that. I mean, here's some reaction about people that have used the website or lack information on there. We, you know, I'm not, I'm not a tech kind of person, but I, we really ought to. If, if there's room for improvement, that's the place to start. It's not just, you know, a legal requirement. It really is what makes information more available and what gets people more involved. I mean, we really ought, I, there's some good stuff out there. If, if, and maybe it is good. I don't know. Yeah, but, but I think, I think we, I think it's worth some decent investment. And, you know, really, it really is true that with, with more input from citizens we get, we make better decisions. There's no doubt about that. The problem is that people, you know, unless it's something very specific to them, you don't, we don't get that input. What we need is for people to just get generally more engaged in things. And that, and, and people really are, Fort Thomas is great like that. I mean, if you all haven't been involved, some, it sounds like some of you are involved in the visioning process. It, it, there are a lot of engaged people, but there's, there are never too many. And so, I really encourage you to, even if it's not a specific thing to property in your area, that the more input, the better decisions are made.
Excuse me. Could we, as part of that suggestion, if you do build something on the website, have the ability for us to sign up so that we get the notices automatically?
That's what I, yeah.
And we'll be more engaged with what you're saying, as well as then when they're, you know, whether we want to be more engaged or if something is specific to us, we'll know.
And I would say to communicate back, too.
Yes.
I mean, you know, electronically.
Absolutely.
So, you don't have to come to a meeting like this.
We made a, we made a real effort a couple of years ago, and we used the College Informatics at NKU, helped us totally redo our website. The website actually was done by a police officer for the longest time and was great as far as getting information out there, because he was a real tech-oriented, did an awesome job for us. College Informatics helped us redesign the website. A lot of this stuff, I think we kind of created, and then it just kind of fell in the cracks, and we didn't utilize all of the aspects of what we could do. And, and part of it's just getting ourselves acquainted with how do we do this and make sure that we stay on top of it to get that information out there.
Just real quick about the Campbell County Recorder. You know, I've noticed, I'm practically a lifelong resident here, I've noticed that the recorder has articles in it that are way past time, you know, they are not time-like. I see the same article on Fort Thomas Matters or somehow online way in advance of what appears in print. Also, my recorder doesn't always land on my lawn because volunteers, you know, children bring it along, along our neighborhood. And that's, he's not mine. But seriously, it is interesting that our, our point of record or whatever is a newspaper that's distributed by children on a voluntary basis and can't necessarily be counted on to receive in a timely manner, and the print in it is outdated. I would be most curious to see the actual issue, the recorder issue, that had this notification in it, because I'm not real sure if it wasn't the right timely dated printed.
It absolutely was. We have proof of publication. I understand what you're saying, but we have proof of publication, and yes, there are dated articles, but our pub, our required, I mean, they're, they're, the statute, you're talking about a statutory requirement that we have to meet, and we do meet. It has to appear seven days prior, not more than 21 days in a publication. It's required to be that publication. I've been here for over 30 years. When we first started, it's like, why can't we advertise in the Inquirer back then? Because everybody gets the Inquirer. No, they qualify by statute. It's where we're required to put it, and they are in there, even though maybe the articles are dated. If you look at those, they're all published under the terms of the statute, for all the signatures.
So, if this, if this meeting was on June 20th, this, the meeting we all miss, would ever have been missed in the morning, when was that advertised? Seven days prior to June 20th?
At least seven days, not more than 21 days.
Okay.
And it's considered a Thursday publication.
Right.
So, would not have been the week immediately prior, would have been.
So, it's one time and one Thursday.
Right. It would be, because they meet on Wednesdays, it wouldn't have been in the Thursday prior, it would have been the Thursday before that.
And, and actually, a lot of times, that delays a lot of what, you know, people are so excited about how fast stuff happens in government. That's one perfect example. It publishes on a Thursday, somebody comes and makes a request. If they don't make the request in the right time, that you can get it in on that Thursday to be seven days ahead, well, you're next month. So, we have developers coming to towns like up in the, up in the fort, you know, where, oh, well, we missed the deadline for that newspaper to make this request, so now we're delayed an entire month just because of one day because of that recorder issue.
And, and there was legislation that was introduced in part for that reason. It just slows the whole process.
I do get that. What I, what I, my issue is that I don't always get the recorder on my lawn in a timely manner, and there are dated articles, but I completely concede where those announcements have to, by the law, appear at the right time. So, moral of the story is, when that appeared, when that was in the newspaper, what did it say?
It's, it's, it's a notice of a hearing. It states the hearing date, time, location, and again, those are all statutory requirements. The time of the meeting, the location of the meeting.
But it said there would be a hearing about.
Of a text amendment.
About property, about what?
It would do the topic and the location, if there is a location.
Okay.
So, it would talk about the planning commission's public hearing, this date, this time, this topic.
Okay. All right. Well, obviously, we appreciate the motion to do something.
It was seconded for now.
Yeah, let me, hang on, let me finish out this motion. So, we, any further discussion from council? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Hi.
Mr. Bowman.
Hi.
Mr. Beasley.
Hi.
Mr. Bierman.
Hi.
Mr. Slaughter.
Okay, that's good. Yes.
Tonight, I was excited to bring my daughters. They skipped swim practice in order to come. And I first made the, let's go and figure out how government works in our community.
Uh-oh.
And, well, I do want to give you a compliment because you've had, I didn't realize we had so much hand tying, but I feel like you guys have been respectful to listen to our hearts and our concerns. And while it may be disappointed to not see Leslie Novak there, I think that there is some encouragement that we can, maybe we'll see a different story for them.
Thank you.
And I know I asked them before, I said, if there's anything that you guys would want to say. I love the bike path idea.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Well, our, you know, my compliments to you, because young people need to be, I mean, that's a great way to bring up your kids. I mean, this is, this idea of government is how our society collectively is supposed to make decisions and make progress. People need to be engaged in it. I think that's a great lesson.
Well, and it's going to be exciting for them to see what happens and see if we're not talking about tonight, talking about. It's going to be exciting once we live at 62nd Hawthorne. My name is Laura.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I think I should make a statement that I, I grew up on the South Side. I live on Riverview. And I moved off of Riverview when I got married, and I bought a house back on Riverview after I was married, so.
Good.
I live on Sheridan, so I live on the South Side as well.
Yes.
I wasn't going to open my big mouth, but here it goes. I'm Bonita. I live on Bonnie Lane. It's where I was raised, born, bred, the whole bit, on the other side of the tracks.
Not the slums, but the other side of the tracks.
South Side. There are parts of Fort Thomas that are considered the South Side, and I did jokingly, with the gentleman that was with Mr. Howe, the other, last meeting, I joked with him outside and said, well, mister, I live in the park, South Side. He can't speak from our standpoint, because he does live in a park, and he's not seeing...
Okay, we're back to a specific applicant.
No, no, I'm saying, as the, as the council looks at Fort Thomas as a whole, please look at it as a whole. One thing, the other day, I went down Hollywood Drive. Knew Hollywood Drive well, growing up, because I had some playmates that I used to go to school with, lived down there. I was in shock at the front, and this wasn't during when RWI would have been working and that kind of stuff. This was later. Both sides, it looked tacky. I, I thought, oh, my gosh, is this what Hollywood Drive has turned into? As I got past the initial scare at the beginning, then I saw, oh, this is closer to what I remember Hollywood Drive being. But I just wanted to put my two cents in, is I was shocked with that, the whole aesthetics of that, the parking, the cars, the block, I mean, I, one poor resident couldn't even get past because I was coming up, and I mean, there was just nowhere to go, and it was just, just the whole feel of it, it was so tacky. So, if anybody were to just accidentally turn down Hollywood, they, they would get out of there as fast as possible because it would scare them, the way it looked. It was horrible. So, I just want to put that in. South Side, please keep in mind that we do want, I am on the visioning committees, but I, I'm not on many. I accidentally became part of the visioning committee. The website, when it comes to the city meetings and that kind of stuff, it's on there, but then I had to figure, okay, which Wednesday, Monday, is this the third Tuesday of the fourth month of the, it is not clear. On the Campbell County Recorder, when I came back to Fort Thomas, I started, I got a Campbell County Recorder. The only one I got was the one that had a bill in it that said, I'm going to be coming around and collecting on this. Now, when I cut down my bushes, I found several Campbell County Recorders back in behind my bushes and that kind of stuff. On top of it, there were times I found them on the hoods of my vehicle that had been sitting there because I didn't go to that part of the driveway, and I have a very short little driveway, but I didn't see the things, and there they are baking in the sun, rain soaked on the hood of my car and that kind of stuff. So, I didn't realize that the Campbell County Recorder was something that that's what I need to be reading. I do not see any Campbell County Recorders. When I got the one with the bill, I tried to communicate with anyone, please. I tried to communicate with the person who was collecting the money. I tried to call Campbell County Recorder. I tried emailing, who, what, when, or where, what do I need? I need some details about the Campbell County Recorder. So, I see not one single Campbell County Recorder anymore, unless I went and pulled it out of the old bushes that I had. But I, I mean, I really don't get it, so I didn't know that that's where I need to be going for pertinent data. Please, on, on the website, if there's some way, like, the sign posted that on the 19th, we're going to have a city council meeting, on, on the 20th, we're going to have a planning commission meeting. I, for one, am curious, because I've never been really involved in stuff, unless it is specifically to a certain person on the street type thing, I wouldn't have known about a lot of this. So, I try, I'm trying so desperately to communicate with people I know, go down there, see what's going on, because we really, after the fact, when everybody starts complaining, the city council allowed this to happen, no, the city council didn't. I will say to you guys, you've been very approachable, and I love that. We, as citizens, all of us, need to address meetings and visioning committees and that kind of stuff. And yeah, I know a lot of people have very busy lives and schedules, but we, as citizens of this community, one day, we're going to wake up, and we're going to find out, there's things that we don't want. So, kind of, all of us, as a community, need to get that word out to everybody. Your life is important, yes, and you are busy, yes, but this is our community, and this is what's happening to us. So, there's my thing now.
Thank you. All right.
Sorry. I'm being a little short. So, I wasn't really planning on addressing anybody today, but I feel like I'm probably one of the only ones that have it, so I'll...
Name an address, please.
Lori Deal, 119 Hollywood Drive. I am a relatively recent resident of Fort Thomas. I've been here for about a year and a half. Michelle Knight spoke earlier about the vision for the 27 corridor. I absolutely believe in that. Wide streets, slow, slow-moving, park benches, bike paths, tied to a two-year-old. That's the Fort Thomas I thought I was moving to. And that's all. I just want to make sure that the text amendments that we make and the decisions that follow that are in alignment with our vision. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, again, thank you all very much. We will move on with, well, at this point, we, we're discussing the text amendment. It's the first reading. We can have further discussion on this amongst council based on the information that we received from the planning committee. If anybody would like to start anything on this.
Do you want to have a reading?
Well, you have to do that. Is it, you want to have the reading now or wait till it's on the agenda?
Either way. Either way. We can move ahead.
They would like to hear it.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and read that, or, let's read the ordinance, and then we'll have discussion on it.
This is a summary of ordinance of 2018. An ordinance amending the text of the official zoning ordinance of the city of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, to include self-storage facility as a listed permitted use in a general commercial zoning district under Article 10 Zen Regulations, Section 10.12, General Commercial Zone, subsection A, uses permitted, and amending the text of Article 7, definition, section 7, by adding a definition for self-storage facility. The planning commission has forwarded its recommendation to city council for approval of two text amendments to the official zoning ordinance. One amendment would add self-storage facility to the definition section, and one amendment would list self-storage facility as a permitted use in a general commercial zone. City council adopted the two text amendments.
That would be if we pass it.
All right. So, that is the first reading, and I'll open the floor for discussion.
I was in attendance at that meeting, and so I feel like I could speak to the issue if anybody has any amongst us questions about what transpired at the meeting. I was there. I don't know what level of detail we want to go into, but there was quite a, there was an impressive attendance at that meeting as well, and there were two no votes, so it was not a unanimous slam dunk thing. So, that being the case, I'd probably use more scrutiny from our body. That would be my--
Well, Ken, one, one thing that jumped out at me was the, how narrow the definition is. And in reading the record, I couldn't quite pick up the conversation that led to the wording that we see here.
This, the definition that we see here is pretty specific to the proposal that was presented by the applicant. So, I would assume that should the text amendment become part of the new ordinance, anybody that wanted to do that in another GC zone would probably be having to either conform to the way his was initially proposed, or I guess go to board of adjustment to ask for a variation on their particular application or another text amendment.
Well, no.
No, we can go to board of adjustment.
Or what, again? I mean, the language, typically with a text amendment, an individual that makes the request works with staff on the actual proposed language to fit it into the, you know, the required sections that would accommodate the request, and they work with the staff on the actual language. So, the language that's presented is what would be voted on and was voted on by planning and zoning. And so, there's no variation to that. It would become a matter of law if it's approved in the text, and a text amendment is the only way that you would change it.
The language--
So, this language would apply to any applicant for any self-storage structure in a general commercial zone if this language existed in this zoning ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, the language in this actual ordinance does reference some of the specific plans, such as the definition that would include or require inside entrances to the units as opposed to outside. That's specific to the applicant's plan. And so, that language ended up in this ordinance, and so I would think anybody that wanted to deviate from that would, then have to go to planning and zoning, or?
Yes, it would require a text amendment.
Okay.
So, anytime you create a definition for any use or violation or any aspect of the zoning ordinance, that definition helps guide the enforcement or application of that for our zoning administrator, and that would become the text that would serve for that purpose.
Correct.
Any deviation from that would require that the ordinance be changed through the same process, text amendment. Correct.
Ken, can you speak? So, during the committee meeting, were other pure cities addressed the Holly Deal this issue? So, for instance, you know, Fort Mitchell, right, or Mayor of Martin, those are pure cities. Was that addressed during the--
To the best of my recollection, the only example that was given as a, a storage facility within a residential confined was downtown Cincinnati, which is a totally different animal. And that's, that's going deeper into this, like, big picture. That's a lot of my concern, too, just as you just now did. We frequently, as a body of government, when there's, when there's an issue that needs to be discussed or hammered out, we always say, "Well, has this happened anywhere else?" You know, "Let's see what, where this, you know, if this has happened in another city." And, and so, should we move forward and should the approval be given, theoretically, Fort Mitchell could have the same issue, you know, Terrace Park, whoever, another applicant, and then we're a pretty respected source, and they could say, "Well, they did it in Fort Thomas." You know, so, bigger picture. You know, there's broader implications to our decision, I think.
Jay, you said something earlier about the question that was asked, how, what factors are taken into consideration when these, when a language or addition, additional, yes, use would be taken into consideration? And looking through all the other uses, they all look like either storefronts or shops or something along those lines. This, this actual number 68 kind of sticks out to me as not lining up with the rest of those. Was that, was that talked about during that meeting, or how does that--
No, it was talked about during the meeting in the context that, while there's already 60, whatever, five permitted uses, you could have a liquor store, you could have a bar, as if, should justify adding one more use. But I don't think that there's anything in the permitted uses now, I'd have to review it to be sure, but I don't think there's anything that would be of that scale.
Well, I'm not talking about scale. I'm talking about use. And I would say a very large percentage of these are all shops or storefronts or some type of, I mean, dry cleaning laundry, that's, that's considered a shop, but this, this kind of sticks out to me as not being in line with the rest of them. And I didn't know if that was brought up during the meeting or not.
Well, if there, these numbers are not, these pages are not numbered, but again, if you look at your transcript, on the third last page, one of the commission members made the comment, "As the definition is in the text amendment, I think it is compatible with the other uses, or even less, even less of an issue than a lot of the other uses in the general commercial zone. I would rather see this van, an automotive repair store, or a packaged liquor store, and line, I, I think this might have been a misprint, and line store. I'm not sure what that is. That's why I think it's actually less intense use than a lot of what's in the general commercial zone already."
So, it wasn't--
So, that, that's just kind of reflecting somebody's thoughts.
Yeah.
You know, I'd be sort of a point of order here. So, you know, we have to make a record of what we say, because they could appeal that, either side could appeal that. Wouldn't it be better to just have this discussion when we're going to vote on it?
You could.
Rather than have further discussion now? I, you know, then it's all in, you know, one place, one set of minutes. I mean, we've already had some discussion. I don't know if this is recorded, but this gets, you know, just all complicated all over the place. It makes it more difficult for people to deal with if we, you know, don't really follow the procedure that's--
And also, the transcript is being proofed because, you know, the person who transcribed it was not an employee of the city.
Yeah.
So, now, one of the employees of the city who was at the meeting is listening to the tape and this to make sure there are no type of--
So, it's not filed either.
So, it is--
I hope that gets out, because there's a ton of errors in here and--
Yeah. And so, I suggested that they go through, not to change it other than what was actually, you know, reflect what was actually said at that meeting. So, to your point, Roger, it may make sense to wait till you have the final draft to have the discussion.
Yeah. Do we expect that?
She was working on it today.
Okay.
And it'll go up.
I think that in itself would give us a good reason to hold back, because there's a lot of inaudible in here where they couldn't understand what's in. I think the general gist is here. I think the information is very helpful in reading through this, but I, I see your point, Roger, and this is just the first reading. We can get the better transcript and then have discussion at the next meeting and get into more detail about it, if that's okay with everybody on council.
There was also, I think, a petition presented at that that was not included in this. Wasn't there a petition that was--
The planning commission can, Julie Rice can send you a copy. There was a letter introduced, but it was also red, so that it's actually--
Yeah, that's in here.
But then there is a petition that can also be given to you. Yes.
That should probably be included as well.
Okay.
I need to speak off the record and pardon me, but my husband was there. I was under due pressure since it was mentioned that there were two against it. I thought it lost by two votes, so, uh, lost by one vote. So, Councilman Bowman, you were there. I would have thought there would have been three no votes. I was not there, but I thought it only lost by one vote.
There were, wasn't it an eight person? There were two no's. I know there were two no's, and everybody else was a yes.
Five yeses, two no's.
Five yeses.
There's seven on the--
I'm sorry. I, I was misinformed.
Okay. We will move on with our agenda. You all are welcome to stay.
Can we understand the next meeting is per, on the 20th of August?
The next--
That is the next council meeting, and that's when it would be brought to the floor, yes.
But also, there is a planning and zoning meeting on August--
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Well, again--
But--
Please understand that the agenda for the, you might want to check in the office for the agenda. I, I don't know what's on the agenda yet for that meeting.
We're allowed to put on the agenda, the planning and zoning commission, that we'd like this not to be added, correct? Is that a fair statement?
You're, it's a public meeting. You can address that commission. However, if you're interested in a specific topic, it may or may not be on that agenda.
Right, but I can get it on the agenda?
Get, I'm sorry. Get what on the agenda?
Reversing--
You can, you can go to planning commission meeting, and you can make a request. Now, whether it's timely or appropriate, or, you know, that will be determined by the planning commission at that time. But it's an open meeting. It's a public meeting. Anybody can come.
That's all I'm asking.
If you want to call the office, we can, we can talk to you about how, how the agenda's established and when.
Okay.
Is there a place I can look to see how the planning commission is appointed? They're not elected, right?
They're not elected, no.
So, we're giving our feedback. They're not elected. Okay, thank you, sir.
No, but we can tell them. They're, they're appointed by the mayor or they're appointed by the council?
They're appointed, yes.
Who, me? No, I mean, that's how things work.
That's just sort of the process.
Don't, don't we know that? Don't we--
They're appointed, yes.
They're appointed by the mayor.
The mayor.
Well, not with council consent, are you?
No, they are of council consent.
With council consent.
They're by, they're by municipal order.
Okay.
So, you don't have to-- Can bring up the subject, you think?
Well, planning commission, this is out of their hands. This text amendment is out of their hands. They're finished with it. They've made their recommendation. They're not going to take any more action on it.
No recommendation-- Unless we appeal it, right?
Well, you, you wouldn't appeal it to--
Well, you can't appeal something they haven't done. I mean, it hasn't, it's in a, it's a process.
Okay. Well, we're trying to reverse it even faster than it gets--
Yeah.
Well, you're not going to be able to do, you're not going, if you want to call me, we can talk about all the procedural things about their actions.
They are warning us that the next proposal for rezoning of residential property may be before that. So, I would mark a calendar. We don't know that it's--
All we're saying is the next council meeting is August 20th, and oh, by the way, there might be a planning and zoning meeting on the 15th. Don't know what might be on that agenda, but you can call the city to find out, because I doubt that we'll have all our super great internet web announcement stuff done by then, but we're going to work on it. So, again, thank you all very much.
And if there's a public meeting, it will be in your recorder.
Yes. Yes. Okay. So, we're going to move ahead with the agenda. You're welcome to stay, or you can leave. Thank you all so much. We are down to reports of officers. Fire Department Monthly Report. Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor Hauss, and members of council. I really don't have anything to add to the monthly report that was mailed out in your packets, but would be glad to field any questions.
Anybody have any questions for the chief? All right.
Who's receiving fire?
Excellent. It's your second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye. Excellent.
Thank you, Mayor.
Police Department Report.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to report that July 4th went extremely smoothly this year, and that's always a combined effort with police, fire, public works, and all city employees. It went very smoothly. It was very hot that day, but everybody made it work, and as far as our monthly report goes, I'll answer questions.
All right. Any questions?
Yes. Who's receiving fire?
Reagan.
Roll call.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye. All right. City administrators report.
Who's receiving fire?
Okay, fair enough.
I was going to bring up one thing to his report, to say that all we did was Band-Aids and ice packs, but I, I don't want to.
Oh, good.
It's all we did. Good job, Case.
Um, I'll just update on a couple of items. Just one that is of good news to note was we did apply for historic preservation tax credits for the armory and mess hall, and we did receive those.
Nice.
In the amount of $54,301.90 that will be reimbursable to those projects, and they set up, they're setting up this week. So, they're starting on those projects this week. So, that's good news. An update on Alexander Circle. We met with the developer. We had an actual closing. For those that maybe have or have not seen it, the city actually no longer officially owns title to those, although we're integrated with them. We own title to the portions outside the homes themselves that will become part of the park. The important thing's there is they are progressing. Immediately, we had kind of a pre-development, pre-construction meeting that their construction individuals. We're going to have a meeting on site with our safety departments, so everybody becomes acclimated to who's on the site and who's permitted on the site. They're intending to have kind of a public announcement of kind of the closure of that space. Unfortunately, somebody mentioned about the walking around the, this gentleman. Everybody likes to walk around the homes up there as well, and it will be closed off for public access when they get started, and they're very conscious of how important it is to the community, but they do have to close it off. It's becoming a construction site, so there'll be a number of hazards. They will start with site development, which is all the utility work in first phase. They will start with new roofs on all the structures immediately, and they will do all the asbestos removal in all of the structures, and then they will do a rehab of five of the selected units in their first phase. So, that's how they're proceeding.
Five, five units or buildings?
Five units.
Units.
At, yeah, it's, yes.
Will that remain public walking area?
It will after it's completed. Yes. Yes.
So, years.
And in fact, just to identify the area, the, the grass area out in the middle is all, becomes part of Tower Park. So--
So, you'd be doing something with the mill and that, do you possibly?
Um, well, it'll be passive, but I think the intention is that it'll be developed with some walkways and an overlook. You'll be able to access the, the area overlooking the river. There's an intention to work with the Forest Conservancy to cut all the non-native, which will create a better view. We're not cutting trees, but it'll take all that other nasty stuff out of there, and you'll actually be able to see the river from that area. But it'll have, it'll have public access, and it'll be a public right of way, but it will not loop around the ball field anymore. It'll be two-way traffic in and out. So.
Any environmental surprises or anything, or that, that's all--
We hope not.
No, no, no.
Not yet.
I mean, nothing.
Let's just say we spent a lot of time on that topic with the VA before the purchase.
So, there's not, and, and we actually did late testing for the lead contaminant in the soil, and there was no ratings beyond alerting ratings that would require additional work beyond what was already in the scope. So, hopefully not. The North Fort Thomas Avenue sidewalk, and I understand council has received some input, and this kind of goes to the messaging thing, and that has been part of our conversation with some of our visioning, is messaging from the city, communication with our residents. We'll certainly bring up some of those topics when we do the Law Labor License Committee meeting for council. But we've had, obviously, that project was announced with a grant. Just to update where we are, we, and you all know this, but we did, and we're going to hopefully have some, some articles that maybe speak to this issue so our public understands this, but we did have a selection process for an engineer, as you know. They are on board. They are doing work, even though it's not obvious in the field. They're doing design work for construction bid drawings for that sidewalk. There's a, there's a lot of required thresholds for the grant application in order to receive those monies. We have to do a study and do the easement acquisition as part of that upfront process, and those things are all taking place. Our time schedule is to do construction on that project in early spring. It will be bid this year. But the other thing, and this is a late development, is we-- But the other thing, and this is a late development, is we coordinate with all of our utility companies, and we have alerted the Water District as to the number of water main breaks that have occurred there, and their valuation is resulted in their need to replace the main on North Fort Thomas Avenue. So, they have put that from covert out to the corporation, is my understanding.
And somebody's painting all that today.
So.
The same side of the street or the sidewalk?
It hasn't been designed yet. They've put it out for a design bid, so it is on the street to solicit their engineer. The intention is that that project would be let out prior, obviously, to us doing our work.
But the existing main that's going to be replaced, you know, which is side of the street?
Do not.
That's all.
It depends on the location of all the other utilities. So, when they get their engineer to design it, they'll choose where.
It really doesn't matter because all the, all the connections would be interfering with our sidewalk anyway, so that all has to be done before the sidewalk.
But the, the messaging there is, it is on schedule, and I know it was announced earlier, but due to meeting all those requirements, and now with the water main, it is, it is scheduled for us to do our work in next year. When we do this, a design and have a design available, we'll have a public meeting for residents.
Do we know?
And that will occur in the fall.
Do we know that if, if the necessary easements have been obtained?
They, no.
Some have some.
No. The, there, if you touch any individual's property, they have to have a construction easement.
Right.
In advance. So, all those have to be identified after you do the design before you know how much you're going to affect the individual property. So, those, those are in sequence.
But even with this water thing, you, you think it can be done next spring?
Yes. It's our understanding that the Water District has approved this project in their budget in this fiscal year. So, their intention is to, to let it out for a project bid after it's designed this fall for construction over the winter.
He is saying spring, so that gives us a little bit more of a time. Springs.
We don't have control over their schedule. We only tell them what our schedule is and that they have to be before us, so, and they're aware of our requirements, so. So, we, we may do an updating and try to get a mailing out, but again, it's difficult to know who all has interest in it, and when you start going direct mailing, you can, you can do the people that have frontage on that affected construction site, and that's really the extent of what we'll do. Moving forward, just a couple of other items. The street program, of course, is pentland, and that also has the water main. If you've been by there, the detour signs are up. They've saw cut for the water main is the first part, and they'll be working in there this week. And unfortunately, that, you know, that will get us into October probably before that project's complete. The Moyer streetscape, we talked about it at the last meeting. We got, actually got good bids on the light post. We're working now currently on the crosswalk at that location. So, you'll see that completed prior to the school, um, school year starting in the next three weeks. And then I noted a couple of retirements, and obviously, we have some retirement parties for our retiring police chief, Chief Daley, and that one is on July 31st. And, and then firefighter paramedic Matt Stewart is retiring, and his retirement party is on August 3rd. We have it in this room, and the public's invited, or any employees or other employees wish them well in their retirements. The visioning schedule that you heard people discussing, we will be posting a schedule on the website for that. The, the committee meeting, the committees may meet one more time with final drafts of their particular committee, but we'll, we will be going through the required, um, upper, it's a plan update, so there will be a goals and objective public hearing that goes to planning and zoning, and we'll probably set a special meeting for them to consider those because, because that is required as a formal adoption to meet statute. At that same meeting, we'll probably do a working meeting with the Planning Commission to update them of the draft of the plan, and then there'll be a public presentation of the plan in total, which will probably be a joint meeting of planning and zoning in, in this commission, um, council. And the only other thing Joe had to cut out early, but we have contracted with Paycor, and we did our payroll through Paycor, and all of our employees got paid this pay period. So, it worked, first time.
Did they get paid the right amount?
They got paid the right amount. I'm not going to say there weren't glitches, but they will be worked out, and it will be of great benefit. And quite frankly, there, as you know, the, with modern technology, there's so many opportunities there that will assist that process and our employees. And everything is direct deposit, and they'll be able to access all their records individually. So, it's a very good move, and we were very encouraged with the first time through, so. And the Fourth of July was great, and we heard from the safety departments, and there were no issues, and thank everybody for participating.
We need more candy.
All right.
Did you say Caroline Mordi is going to be done Rocktober?
It, it is being initiated now, just so clear. There's a water main that'll take place first, and it'll take about five or six weeks to be done with that. Immediately behind that will be our street contractor, and that will probably take an additional six to eight weeks. So, it'll be completed sometime in October. It's on schedule at this point.
So, how does that impact kids coming out of our neighborhood? Can they still walk on pentlands again?
Um, the sidewalks will be open on one side or the other all the time, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It will be a complete reconstruction of the pavement, but not the sidewalks.
If my kid's on the pavement, he deserves to get stuck in the ass.
Don't put that in minutes.
No. That it?
That's it.
Great.
If you have any questions, that's it.
All right. New business, consideration agreement with FDISD for School Resource Officer. What FD? Fort Thomas Independent School District.
Well, we are very happy, and when I say we, we have spent some time at a staff level working with the school district, and I will ask Casey to join in this conversation as well through our police department. And I will also add that this agreement, although it's written between the city and the Fort Thomas Independent School District, it also includes the School Resource Officer being a participant in the parochial schools within our city as well. But the agreement is specific to the working relationship between the other two. And I will just preface it and certainly ask Casey to join in. And obviously, we're no different than anywhere else in our country. We've had a lot of issues with, you know, the topic of school safety. The school officials and the city officials have been in conversation over a period of time, dating back a couple of years, on this topic. But working with those individuals and with our police department, we have determined that we have an opportunity to create a School Resource Officer position within our police department, and that it will involve one of our officers basically being assigned to the schools during the workday during the calendar year of the school. And they will rotate and be engaged in, with their administration of each school location. They will rotate onsite. They'll be based out of the high school, and they will have their workday centered around student safety, school safety, and the locations within our community where our students are during the day. If you recall, we have a traffic officer assignment that was specific to traffic. This is really not different in that we are taking one of our officers and basically making their primary responsibility centered around schools and school safety, working with the individuals onsite at all those locations. And what you have before you this evening is a request. The school is actually considering the same agreement at their meeting this evening that basically outlines the working relationship between our officer and the school and how they will conduct their affairs when they're acting in this role. So, um, the request is for approval of the mayor to sign off on the agreement. At this point, it is, I don't want to say it's, um, it's a test year, but in reality, the first year you do anything is kind of a test year. We had some conversation about financial responsibility and participation, and we really felt like at this point it was financially possible to utilize our staff the way they're currently and, uh, number-wise, and just have an assignment in this capacity at this time. But we've had conversation about how that might be shared in the future if we feel like this program is worthwhile and we decide to continue it into the future. So, um, this would be an agreement for one year, one school year. The dates are specific in the agreement. So, that's kind of where we are. And Casey, please, if you want to add anything.
Well, I think you covered it very well, but I would just add that, you know, we have been approached by several different stakeholders throughout the city, asking, you know, why don't we have an SRO position right now? And I, I think that the timing is right, with the exception of the retiring of Chief Daley, we're fully staffed, so it's, it's a position that we have several officers capable of doing, and we're, we're fully staffed to the point where we can do it with an in-house officer without creating too much stress in our department. I think we're getting the timing right by doing it for this coming school year.
Excellent.
I apologize for the lateness, but it was a work in progress, so you all have kind of seen it late, but, um, and, and the, the draft is borrowed, it's borrowed language that they presented to us and Jan reviewed it, and we've, we've made sure that it represents our interest to the level that, that is necessary.
Would the SRO visit more than one school in the course of one day, or would it be one day here?
Well, Mr. Bowman, we, we would anticipate that he rotates amongst the seven schools, which would be the, the five independents and the two, two parochials. The schedule as to how often he spends at each school would be up to him and each principal. You know, one school may need him for something specific every Thursday at 10:00, whereas another school may say, we need you here all morning on Monday. So, that'll be incumbent on the police officer to figure that out the first couple of months. And he's going to be flexible, and we're going to be flexible and make it work, but he, hopefully, will make it around to each of the seven schools on, on a weekly basis. And, you know, down the road, if one of our preschools calls and says, hey, can you send our SRO over to teach a class? We'd be open to that, too.
So, but he, he would be stationed, have an office at the high school?
Correct. Yes, sir.
So, what if some non-school incident occurs and he's needed, he or she is needed for that incident? Do, do they leave just like they would for a normal police incident?
Certainly, if there was some type of emergency and he heard it on his radio, he would, he would go. We would expect him to be reasonable.
He's got a car.
Certainly. People have a car, but being a full police uniform, it's, to me, it's really just putting a police officer in the school system on a full-time basis. There's no different, he's not any less of a police officer just because he's there. It just happens to be where he's going to spend his whole day.
Now, is there special training?
There is, and he actually started his today. It's a forty-hour through the Department of Criminal Justice training, which is what we all have to do mandated by KRS and.
You hear somebody of mine already?
We've, we've talked about it, we're doing it.
Yeah.
We picked Officer Zach Roffer. After an internal process with four candidates, he was, he's been with us for a long time, and he's spent a lot of time in the school already, so he was the right choice. But he started the trainings, but.
Great. Just a very technical thing. You've got an odd date in here, starting June 20th. It seems it should just be July 1st, so it runs with the budget here. There's some, you know.
Well, they are actually, it's August 6th, which is a week prior. That's when the people, um, staff are.
When the schools.
Starts with their people, so they'll be about a week and a half ahead of the students, and they'll be in each school meeting with their staff and interacting with them at each location. And then it goes through a week past their last school date, so.
That's when they.
And then he'll be returned back to regular duty after the school year's over.
But the contract itself is a one-year contract, and I'm just saying.
One school year, one calendar year.
Oh, yeah, one calendar year.
Yeah, one school calendar year.
School calendar year, so it's actually less than a year. Okay, I got you.
So, he'll be expected to be on regular assignment after school is completed in June.
Okay, okay. Then, I guess the other thing is, so it has this indemnity language in there, and do we, is there a special rider we need for that, or is that just covered by our general liability?
It would be covered under our general liability.
So, we don't.
There are still, there's still an employee of the city acting as a police officer. They, they just, their assignment's just specific.
But we are identifying the school district.
To the extent provided by law, which is.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't know. The fact that insurance is in there doesn't make any difference on it, I guess, doesn't it?
So, they can't identify us? That's what I would almost ask for, right? No?
We can't either.
Indemnification with by governments isn't permitted.
We are indemnifying them.
But we add to the extent permitted by law, which is, we can't identify them.
Okay.
That's, that's pretty standard.
Those people want that, like, want the indemnification clause in their contracts.
Right.
But we can't do it.
Can't do it.
So, what they let us put in there is, to the extent provided by law.
Okay.
Which is not.
It's not.
You lawyers talk together. You know.
So, that's what you can learn in law school. That's what they teach you.
Does need action.
Yes, yes. It would be authorizing the mayor to sign.
Move approval.
Any further discussion? Roll call both.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye. Excellent. Thank you. All right, Finance Committee reporting first.
Report of the Disbarment, June 16th, 2018 through July 13th, 2018. General Fund, four hundred twenty thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Tower Park Fund, one thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and seventeen cents. Public Works KDOT Fund, four thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. Re-accarring Debt Service Fund, one thousand one hundred forty dollars and eighty-eight cents. CBD Revitalization, one hundred thirty dollars and thirty-one cents. Waste Fees, ninety thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars and five cents. Police and Fire Pension Fund, one thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents.